Okay, it is six o'clock and so I'm gonna go ahead and call the December sixth meeting of the Monticello School Board to order. And we will note the absence of Jamie Seaborn and note that Jeff Hagley is running late, but will be here, is right here. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Perfect timing, Jeff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, fair, and equal, with equal justice for all. And at this time, I'll seek approval of the agenda.
Sole moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. We do not have any citizens' comments for tonight, and now we have our student representative report. Anyone? Nope. Okay. So we'll go without. Then we'll go on to the consent agenda. Board members, you would have received the packet of information. If there's anything that you need to seek clarification, questions or anything, any discussion, now would be the time. Otherwise, I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sole moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Now on to the work session recap that I have. Just gonna pull that up. So the school board had a work session after our meeting on November fifteenth for the purpose of budget planning. Several members of our administration were in attendance to be able to answer any questions the school board members had. We started with a quick review of where we are budget-wise, went over the list of potential budget cuts that have been identified as the most likely reductions. This list of most likely reductions totaled only approximately two million of the three point one million that we will be needing to cut. We then went over a rubric tool that can be used to prioritize and identify the remaining one million in cuts. We went over a list of possible additional reductions. Board members were able to ask questions or request additional information on these possibilities. Administration will be working on gathering the requested information and board members are working on using that rubric tool. And we will again be meeting for another work session in January to continue the process of planning for the necessary three point one million in budget reductions. So.
Thank you, Jennifer. Since you're, you need somebody to say that since you can't thank yourself.
No. Now I gotta switch back to the agenda here. So then moving on, we are now with truth and taxation with Tina.
Yes, good evening. We have our annual truth and taxation hearing tonight. And if you want to go to the next slide, this is for the two thousand twenty-one payable two thousand twenty-two tax levy. For us, it's revenue coming in for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So it's a bit six months in the leg for us for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. With, sorry, I was a slide ahead of myself. So with this truth and taxation, there is a law in place that was originally approved in nineteen eighty-eight and then amended in two thousand nine. So counties must send out proposed tax statements to all residents between November eleventh and the twenty-fourth. All taxing jurisdictions, cities, townships, school districts have to have a truth and taxation hearing, which we are having tonight between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-sixth at six P M. or later. And then we have to adopt our final levy by December twenty-eighth. The state requires a couple things. We have to present our current year budget. We have to go over the proposed tax levy, go over any increases or decreases from the previous year, go through specific reasons why those are happening, and we have to allow for public comments. So after this, we'll have a session for questions. Unlike cities and counties, like I mentioned, we don't set our budget at this hearing. We have a fiscal year that starts July first through June thirtieth. So our budget happens six months later. We, for the tax levy, that is set in December and it's on a calendar year basis. So we're a little, we're six months off in this process. So because we are since months in the leg, we're only going to talk about this year's budget. We don't know next year's budget. There's too many estimates and a lot of stuff unknown for us to have that in place just yet. So within our budget, we have various different funds that are separated based on purposes of revenue as determined by the state. We have a general fund that includes our special ed cooperative where they purchase employees from us and reimburse us. We have our food service fund. We have a community service fund that houses our hockey fund that is managed by, in team with the Monticello Youth Hockey Association, our debt service fund or our mortgage account fund, internal service fund, and our OPEB trust fund or other post employment benefits. So here we just have a table summarizing our current budget that's in place. The first column includes our audited fund balances, which will be presented later this evening with our audit, and then the revenues and expenses that were adopted in the original adopted budget in June. So our general fund had a starting balance of seven point six million with revenues at fifty-nine point four million and expenditures at sixty-one million. So our fund balance will be estimated to drop to five point nine million or almost six million. Our other funds are kinda almost revenue expense neutral, but there are some slight changes, but they're there for you to look at. If you take a look at the funds and by the revenue, you can see our general fund has the majority of the pie. Eighty-three percent of the money coming in resides in our general fund for general operations. The other funds aren't nearly as large as our general fund. And on the expense side, the next slide has the same ratio. Our general fund has the most expenses coming out of eighty-three percent. Just taking a look at our general fund revenue budget, most of the revenues coming in comes from the state, seventy-five percent or thirty-six million. And this does not include our special ed cooperative fund. We have another ten point seven million that comes from our special ed cooperative to pay for the employees that they purchase. Local property taxes is our next biggest source of revenue at seventeen percent. And then we have federal sources or other local revenue at four percent, rounding out the most of our budget. On the expense side, we are very labor intense where salaries and benefits include about eighty percent of our budget. And then we have purchase services, which is a lot of contracted services, whether it's transportation or specialized services, nursing services at thirteen percent, and then supplies and materials and capital rounding out the rest of the budget. So like I said, the law says we have to talk about changes in our levy. We'll talk about how taxes are determined, reasons for the change. We'll look at some examples or estimated examples, and then we'll talk a little bit about the refund programs. So reasons why a tax bill could change from year to year could be the change in value of your own personal property. It could be the change in the total value of all the property within the district, or it could be based on funding formulas that are determined by the state or voter approved referendums. The state is heavily involved in our process. They set the formulas that are determined in our levy. They set the tax policy on which taxes are calculated. They set the maximum amount of levy that we can approve unless there is a voter approved referendum, and they authorize the board to go out for a voter approved referendum. This flow chart has the tax levy process, and we are only one small box in this flow chart. The city or the county is involved with assessments of the light of the property in the district. The state is involved with the calculations and the rates set to determine based on the property. We just determine or approve the proposed tax levy in September, have a truth and taxation hearing in December, and then have the final levy approved. And then the county auditor kind of takes those all together and sends out the final tax statements to the just, to the residents. Just another look at the timeline. On September eighth, M D E or the state sends out a levy report to all school districts that has all the calculations on how the levy is determined. On September thirteenth, we approved a proposed tax levy, which was set at the maximum. In mid-November, the tax statements were mailed out to residents of the district. Tonight, we're having our hearing, and then the next board meeting will approve the final levy. So this is just a summary of our levy, and we'll go into more in depth in the following slides. But overall, our tax levy from last year to next year is seeing an overall decrease of ninety-three thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents or a minus point seven five percent. So basically, pretty much the same as last year. Our general fund is going from eight point six million to almost eight point six million, eight million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, or a decrease of sixty-six thousand or a minus point seven seven percent. Our general or our community service fund is increasing a little bit, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars or nine point two five percent. So a little bit of change based on updated census information and school age care programming. And our debt service levy was decreasing, I think sixty-six thousand or minus point, one point seven seven percent. So just going through the different changes of the levy, the first one had a major change was our local optional revenue. It had a decrease of one hundred twenty-nine thousand. This can be used for general operating expenses, and this decrease was mainly in the form of a drop in student enrollment. Our next category, other post-employment benefits saw an increase of one hundred ninety-seven thousand. This is used for other post-employment benefit costs. So we saw an increase in our health insurance premiums on our plan year that started October one, two thousand twenty, and we had more retirees under the contracts that have a sunset clause, meaning that anyone hired after a certain point gets or does not get a certain retirement benefit. A long, long-term facility maintenance program saw a decrease of seventy-nine thousand. This is for our projects that are in our ten-year deferred maintenance plan. So again, this is based on formulas, and it was based on a lower student enrollment count. Our lease levy saw an increase of ninety-seven thousand. This is for operating leases or capital leases for instructional spaces. So we saw an increase with additional space for our nature-based programs at the three sites. And then general fund adjustments has just all the adjustments put together as the state goes back, looks at, like I said, enrollment counts or other formulas, choose up everything, and based on what actually happens, they make adjustments. So all those adjustments together saw a collective one hundred fifteen thousand dollar decrease. And a lot of that was due to the lower enrollment counts. When you take a look at our levy and its makeup, sixty-two percent is just general levy that's determined based on formulas, and thirty-eight percent is based on voter approved referendums. So there is no change there. We didn't see a successful vote on our voter referendum. So the makeup is consistent to last year. So next, we'll look at a couple of tables and graphs that was prepared by Ellers, our financial advisors, to see kind of what people might expect on their property tax statements. And so they have a list of different ranges for resident homesteads values, starting from a hundred thousand up to half a million, five hundred thousand. And if there was no changes in their property value, people could see a decrease in their tax levy. And the next couple of slides just have some examples at a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred seventy-five thousand. And you can see it's pretty, it's dropping just a little bit if they had no ch, no changes in their value. And the next two had two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand as estimates. The next table has what if they saw a cumulative average of an increase of eight point two percent on their market value. I think I saw a little higher than that. For me personally, the last two years, I think I saw fifteen percent. But if somebody saw eight point two percent, they still probably could see a decrease or relatively flat change in their property taxes. Just talking about school taxes. I don't know about city or county. So again, the same property estimates for a hundred fifty thousand, one seventy-five looks pretty stable. And then the next two had two hundred thousand and two hundred fifty thousand dollar home values. Also, that's important for our residents to know, like I mentioned, what's going on for the total property value in our district. So Excel is a huge property owner in our district. So they saw a decrease in their value this current year, two thousand twenty-one of six percent. So that could have an impact to our residents as well, because their burden is being shifted to the residents of Monticello. So they could see an increase because of that. So if people saw a huge increase in their property taxes, they could do some property tax refunds with, through the state of Minnesota. I don't know if there will be any large increases because we didn't have a voter approved referendum. If we had, they might wanna use these refunds. But if, they should talk to their tax professional or visit the Minnesota Department of Revenue website. And there are three different property tax refund programs, the Minnesota Property Tax Refund, the Special Property Tax Refund, and the Senior Citizens Property Tax Referral. So we will approve a final levy at our next board meeting at December twentieth. I'll have, I had my contact information on this presentation. For anybody that had questions, it's on their truth and, or their property tax statements. But tonight, I don't know if there are any questions from the public on their then taxation notices.
Thank you, Tina.
Did you have any questions?
Okay. Good. Okay. We are going to go back and have our student representative report before we move on to the agenda.
Hello, once again, I am Emelisa Kana Al-Mohammed. Natalie does apologize for not being here this evening. She had other business to attend to tonight. She does send her best regards. So I do have quite a few things to go over today, but they are all good things, I promise. So first, we are getting ready for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year with registrations. There have been many meetings for students to learn about and review courses that are offered. Now, this includes like advanced courses such as advanced placement, C I S, P S E O, and even for students who are interested in going to Wright Tech. So there have been many meetings at the school and I believe outside of school for both students and parents to become more involved, aware. These are services that we offer here. Oh, we are also preparing for eighth grade students and their parents for entering into the high school during this time of year, getting them introduced to high school registration and just allowing them to ease into this new stage into their life. The next thing I'll be talking about is Toys for Tots. The dates are December first to December seventh. Basically, what we want is for students to help donate toys to the school that can be given to people who are in need. Now, it's called Toys for Tots, as in like toddlers, but there's been more of an emphasis for teenagers because during this time teenage, toys or stuff that are for teenagers aren't really donated or given. And well, people our age kind of feel left out, and that's not a good feeling for the school year. So student council and a lot of our administration is sort of encouraging for more toys and things that are for kids our age, you know? Oh, this donation thing, you know, to get an incentive to get students to donate, it's a grade level competition. This has been going on for years ever before I've been in the high school. And the winner, it goes by grade, where there's a specific teacher that you give your toys to for a specific grade, and the grade with the most donations wins and they get to win a prize. I'm not sure what that prize is, but it's a good one. In the past, it's always been sophomores who've won. Like in my experience, when we were sophomores, we won and, but like, this year's a little different. I hear the juniors have been kind of stepping up. So we'll see what happens. New toys are appreciated, as mentioned before, but books can be donated as well, but they have to be new books or high quality. They can't be old books and low quality. Something new this year is you can also donate money if you'd like. Donating money isn't new, but we have added a Venmo, which for those of you who don't know, it's like an electronic service where you can donate money electronically. There are posters for Toys for Tots posted all over the school, and on those posters are the, is the information for Venmo. So that's kind of like a cool thing. We, I know the student council was trying to push to get a Venmo, and now that we've actually done it, it's kind of fun. Like, we did that. Another thing for Toys for Tots is that Care Eleven News is going to be coming on December eighth at, I believe, six P M. or six A M., six something, to highlight the donations and to kind of show the community what we're doing as students to help support those in need, especially during the holiday season. So that will be kind of nice. The next thing I want to talk about is music concerts. They are in full swing. And I asked Mr. Revenek for the dates. On Monday, December sixth, the Wind Ensemble, an eighth grade band, will play at seven P M. On Monday, December thirteenth, the High School Orchestra, an eighth grade orchestra, will also play at seven P M. On Monday, December twentieth, the Choral Festival, acapella, and eighth grade will also play at seven P M. So those are dates to look out for, especially if you have a student or interested in watching these events and help encouraging students to get into these performing arts. The final thing on my list are that winter sports have begun, and the school spirit has been pretty high as students have gotten a big turnout. They've been showing up to their games, encouraging Monticello High School. It's been kind of fun to see all of us encouraging our fellow peers and, you know, kind of show in winter, you know? COVID, we get to kind of recollect and support each other once again, which is fun. Um, that's kind of all I have to say for this evening. If there are any questions or anything you guys are wondering about, feel free to ask. If not, thank you.
Enjoy hearing what's going on.
It's always fun to talk about, you know? Especially, you know, as a senior, I'll be remembering this stuff. I get older. Excuse me. Um, I hope you guys all stay warm. I hear it's getting really cold. It snowed. So please drive safe when you guys go home tonight, and see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will go to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one audit.
All right. Tonight, we have our representation from our audit firm, Mary Reed, Reed, to present, and hopefully we have a PowerPoint. There we go. And I will just pass it over to her.
Thank you for having me tonight. As usual, we have once a year, we get to go through the audit book. Hopefully, don't put anybody to sleep. That's why we pick a PowerPoint to do, so you can see some graphs, see how the district has been and what they are now. A little bit easier to look at and review, but definitely open dialogue. So feel free to stop me at any time. No significant changes in that audit report. So if you look at last year compared to this year, definitely be somewhat similar in those. But we'll go through the PowerPoint, just updated numbers, hopefully no surprises. But as we go through it, just let me know if you have any questions. So this is the general fund. It does include the Special Education Cooperative. So those expenditures and revenues will be included. So total revenues this year, about sixty point seven million, about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand above budget. Expenditures at about sixty point seven, so pretty break even there. They were about two hundred and sixty-five thousand under budget. So when you look at your net change in fund balance, you had a decrease of about twenty-one thousand. You actually budgeted for a loss of four hundred and sixty-six thousand. So even though you did come in negative, you did better than, than what you had budgeted there. When you look at the revenues overall, you did get some more federal monies this year. So last year, you had about three point four million. This year, you went up to six point nine. Now that's all the funds combined, and we'll talk about the others. But basically that for your audit, we had to increase our audit programs, which are separately tested items between, we usually only have to test one to two. We had to test three this year. It's a little bit additional work went into that. We wanted to make sure those. It's a little bit additional work went into that. We wanted to make sure those dollars were being spent correctly. So we did spend a little bit more time on the audit. I'm sure Tina enjoyed that piece of it, but. So we did get through that in a clean, everything was spent as it should have been, so. With those federal dollars, they are one-time usually expenditures, right? So as you go through the budgeting process and you're looking at that too, I wouldn't necessarily rely on that money coming in every year. We have seen that one-time funding prior as well, and it does eventually go away. Just keep that in mind. Unassigned fund balance decreased just a little bit from last year. And so when you compare unassigned fund balance to expenditures, if you were to look at these numbers here, you're at about six percent. When you take out the Special Education Cooperative, you're about seven point two percent. District's policy is between eight to six percent, so you're just slightly under what your fund balance policy is. So just continue to monitor that as you go. Then you can see you have quite a few restricted fund balances, so they can only be spent on items within those categories. You can see LTFM increased from last year, one point five to one point eight. And then your operating capital actually decreased, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand to about one hundred and seventy-four thousand there. So that was the general fund. On the next page, we go to food service. Here, revenues of about two point three million, about two hundred and three thousand over budget. Expenditures at about two million, fifteen hundred under budgets, pretty much break even. Net change in fund balance, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, budgeted for positive thirty-five thousand. So what happened this year in food service is all meals were free, right? So you didn't have students not paying, and then on top of that, the reimbursement rate was higher than what you had been getting in. And so I have seen pretty common that districts increase their fund balance in food service like this. So eventually, you'll need to spend that money down, but it will have to be spent within food service. So then as you look at that, you'll again just want to be the one-time fees, right? Because it's, you won't build that fund balance back up again, so as you're thinking about that process as well. So restricted fund balance ending about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand there. Community Service Fund, it does include the Hockey Fund, so about four point two million of revenues, about sixty-three hundred above budget. Four point one of expenditures, about two thousand under budget. Other financing sources, so you had to transfer in about fifty-five thousand from the general fund. That helps fund some of those programs within community ed. Your net change in fund balance was a positive hundred and nine thousand. You budgeted for a positive forty-six thousand. So Community Service Fund came out better than expected as well. And if you look within Community Service Fund, you have quite a few restrictions there as well, and all of those categories are positive. Next page, page four. Top of that page is the Debt Service Fund. Here, Debt Service Fund, you levy a hundred and five percent of your principal and interest payments for the year, and then you collect those and you make the payments out. So you can see that your revenues just came in slightly under expenditures. So what happens is the state looks at your fund balance. If you have too high of a fund balance, it'll actually decrease your levy. So you won't, sometimes there'll be years where you'll have expenditures more than revenues. But if you look, you can see your restricted fund balance is one point seven million. So about three quarters of the way down there, you can see there's a transfer of about nine hundred and forty-two thousand. So if you look right below that, Capital Projects Fund, you actually closed out the Capital Projects Fund, had some money left over. That is required to be put back in the Debt Service Fund unless you were to spend it on another capital project. So that did go into the Debt Service, so I'm expecting that within a few years, your levy will be adjusted. So your expenditures probably will be higher than your revenues coming in to spend on that money. So going forward, we'll have that Capital Projects Fund closed out until you either start a new project or have new funding. So page five, just like to show bar chart from two thousand seventeen up to two thousand twenty-one, where the unassigned and non-spendable fund balance is for the general fund. Here, as we discussed, it did go down a little bit from prior year, but still well above your two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen years. Page six, gets your restricted, committed, and assigned fund balance. And you did increase this categories as well within there. We talked about some of those that increased there. Page nine, Community Service Fund Balance. So the overall total increased. We talked about each of those categories being positive as well. Page ten, Food Service Fund Balance. You can see the jump there. Hopefully, this year won't be quite as large. You are getting the same funding, though. So it is free for all students again for this entire school year. Page eleven, Debt Service Fund Balance. Talked about that significant jump due to the transfer from Capital Projects. Page twelve, gives you a breakout of the revenues and expenditures for each of the categories within the Community Service Fund. There is a typo on the page at the bottom. It should be two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, nineteen and twenty, sorry about that. But you can see each of these categories coming in as positive. School readiness just got closed out this year, had some fund balance in there. You can see in the past, Community Ed and ECFE, Early Childhood, had zero fund balances. This year, you were able to tuck some money away in each of those programs, and then your adult basic education. So really, the services that you're offering should cover those expenditures for those programs. Page eleven. So where are the sources of the revenues for the district when you look at it in total? So state coming in at about fifty-four percent. Last year, that was fifty-six percent. You'll see the shift in federal. We talked about federal increasing. It was at five percent last year, this year up to ten percent. So then page twelve kind of helps show the shift in that as well. Each of those categories, so you can see that state did decrease. You did have a decrease in students, but there is also a loss of compensatory revenue. So students just not turning in those forms affects that source of funding. I know each district has been struggling with that, trying to think of creative ways to get the students to turn in that information. A lot of times, it's just calling and requesting those forms to come in. Some have done the teacher meetings and had the forms available as well for the, for the students. You can see federal there, the three point four million up to about six point nine million. So then where do those revenues get spent? Here, you can see those categories. Course, regular instruction, and your special education instruction are your major largest pieces of this pie. Last year, Capital Altly was actually at nine percent. This year, went down to three percent. So just depends on what the district has for projects going on. And then Pupil Support Services was at eight percent last year and increased to ten percent this year. So if you look at the next page, then you can see the comparison year over year. Here, it shows regular instruction increased a bit from last year as well. Special education increased, and then your pupil support services increased as well. Jump all the way to page seventeen, sorry about that. Resident ADMs, so average daily memberships, and then your weighted average daily membership. So your high school students are weighted more than your elementary. So blue is your residence, and then red is your resident weighted average membership. You can see the decrease there. But then page eighteen, shows a little bit easier breakout there, residents. You can see here is where you actually lost. So Tina and I were talking about it. It's not that the students moved out of the district. If you're homeschooling your students, they come out of that resident number. So you still potentially have students here, they're just choosing to homeschool, and that would drop your resident base. So you can see that is your biggest decrease. So when you look at it, you were at forty-four, ninety-five last year, down to forty-four, seventeen this year. You actually had more non-resident students coming in than you did in the prior year. I did talk with Tina. You did come back up a little bit from last year, and we have seen that as a common trend for the school districts. They have started to see that ADMs increase this year. So the next page, District and School Administration and Support Services. So we take total expenditures within this category and divide it by the average daily memberships here. You can see you're a little bit on the low end. A little bit of this does have to do with interpretation of coding. Some schools might code admin staff just a little bit different. And then remember, you're just barely over that four thousand, and this is a four thousand and above category. When you look at your pie chart and your percentage of your admin fees, you're right around what I see in other districts as far as percentage-wise of the entire pie chart. The next one gives you the total instructions per average daily membership. So again, we add up each of these categories divided by the ADMs. And you hear you're fairly comparable to those other districts and the state. So that was a brief overview. Again, hopefully no surprises. I know Tina does a very good job at keeping the board informed throughout the year. I didn't know if there are any follow-up questions.
Thank you for coming and going over all of that. Again, it's nice to be able to see that each year.
The audit is an action item. We have our financial statements in draft form until the board officially approves them. And just as a side note on our food service balance, I think Heine would, the fridge and the freezer, they're knows that we have a fund balance and have decided to slowly quit on us, so. There, there are some improvements that need to happen at some of our kitchens this year.
Is this a resolution or just a motion?
It's a motion to approve.
And Clay, we should reflect in the minutes that Kathy had to leave for a band concert, so. Have a motion to approve the audit.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one audit. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four, zero. Thank you. And now we can move on to our resolution for acceptance of gifts.
Right. This usually comes so early, and now it's a little bit later, so. Good to be able to bring some more donations. Two of them here on this board agenda. The first one is from Dan Lehan, five hundred dollars for extra clothes, a mitten dryer, boot dryer, all for nature-based. So just recognizing the need out there and bringing forth this wonderful donation, so thank you, Dan. And then Jennifer Connors, bringing in miscellaneous shop tools and equipment, just to continue to give additional access to students in our, in our CTE courses, specifically the shop classes. So those all went to our Monticello High School, since that is our one building worth an acting and open shop in our district, so. Thank you, Jennifer Connors.
Someone have the resolution up?
I don't, but I will in a minute. There are a be resolved by the Monticello School Board, District eight-eight-two, to gratefully accept the following donations. From Dan Layen, five hundred dollars for extra clothes, mitten dryer, boot dryer for the nature-based. And then from Jennifer Connors, miscellaneous shop tools and equipment to give students access to extra tools and equipment at the high school. Second.
Read by, resolution read by Candy, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes four, zero. And once again, we are just very grateful for our community's support. Now we can move on to our World's Best Workforce with Cindy Foshing.
Cindy's coming up. I just want to make reference to World's Best Workforce being something that very comfortable and very known to us here in our district and the work that our Director of Curriculum and Instruction does. And then she intertwines, M.D. has asked us to intertwine our Achievement Integration Plan as well. So just a reminder that that one is actually more new, and it's actually been one planning with that one has been during COVID times. So we'll have that one to continue to bring forward and work out goals that really make sense for our district so that we can continue to work on the needs of the district. But just wanted to make a reminder as, for your lens, that work for, work for is something that we've done. Achievement Integration is something that we're just starting, and we'll have, continue to work to with that one.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Well, thank you for having me tonight. As you know, once per year, we are required as a district to, to present our annual report on the progress we have made on our World's Best Workforce goals and our Achievement and Integration goals. So that's what I'm going to be doing tonight. You can go ahead. Thank you. I want to start with some just general information about our district. And so this is the district demographics from last year, so keep in mind that this report is from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. So it's a summary of last year. So this was the demographics from last year. If you take a look at that, students are broken down by ethnicity and race. And then our other criteria, we have those four different groups of students that we tend to want to focus on because those are, tend to be our students in need. Go ahead, next one. Couple of pieces of information M.D. provides us is our attendance, our regular attendance rate. And Monticello Public Schools had an attendance rate last year of eighty-eight point eight percent, a little bit above the state average of eighty-five point three. The state has asked us to have a ninety-five percent attendance rate by two thousand twenty-five. And of course, last year was different, so, you know, I'll stop right there and preface. Everything about last year was different, right? So we can expect to see almost everything drop. You're going to see scores drop, you're going to see graduation rates drop, you're going to see attendance drop. It was all typical from last year, and I'm looking for this year to be improved in all categories. So don't, don't be shocked, don't be alarmed. I would be surprised if there was any school in the state of Minnesota who could say that they raised rates across the board, so. I'd also, whoop, back up one step. The other slide just talks about, it gives a little survey to students when they take their MCA tests. And we had ninety percent of our students who would agree that their teachers care about them. I'd like to see that more like ninety-eight percent, but ninety is good, too. All right, go ahead. Piece about college-going student data, which I thought was interesting, and I know the board had asked me a little bit about that at one of our last committee meetings, and so I thought I'd present that. The percentage of students last year who enrolled in an institution of higher education within sixteen months of graduation was seventy-two percent of our students in Monticello compared to seventy-one percent statewide. I would like to see that to be quite a bit higher. I never really, never want to be at the state average. I want to be well above the state average. So something to work on for us. And then the next.
Stop you one second. So on that number, how do we get that information? Is it?
That is, that is recorded through Mars numbers and through, when they enroll in college, they're able to track them through, is it social security numbers? And then they can pull and see where students are at and what their data is at through college.
That's anywhere in the U.S. that they're, okay. Thank you.
That's right. And then the next slide, it talks about of those seventy-two percent of our students that didn't go to institutions of higher education, what percent earned one-year credit within two years, and that was eighty-three percent. So our students who are attending are attending at a high rate and sticking with it, so that's a really good rate. We should be proud of that piece of data, so that's good. The state of Minnesota classifies districts as either low poverty, high poverty, or neither, neither. Same with our ethnicity. And so I just wanted you to know in the next slides that I'll talk about, we're going to be comparing ourselves. And so Monticello is considered a low poverty district. But as far as students of color of fifteen point five nine, we're neither a high nor a low. So in other words, we're somewhere in between. So that's how they're classifying us. So then, next slide, please. We're looking now at our staffing. So I just wanted to know, you would know a little bit about our staffing and what that looks like. So in Monticello, we have ninety-three point one two percent of our teachers who are considered experienced teachers. And that means three or more years of experience compared to, remember, we're a low poverty district. So I would compare to a low poverty, which was eighty-eight point six percent. And even the high poverty is seventy-eight point five. So we're well above either one of those rates, which is very good. And then if you look at the other side, that our ninety-three point one two percent experienced teachers compared to either one of those other categories, still way above. So our district has a very high percentage of highly experienced teachers. So that's one big plus we have. Next slide. Then we look at the percentage of licensed educators. And that means that they have a license or permission to teach in a subject area. We're at ninety-eight point oh six and again, higher than any of the categories on poverty districts. And then when you look at districts with minorities, we would say we're at ninety-eight point oh six compared to the others and still well, well above. So we have a high rate of licensed educators, high rate of experienced teachers. And then if you flip to the next one, on teachers with advanced degrees, we're at ninety-eight point oh six compared to the other two categories. Same on the other side, on the right side, we have percentage of teachers with advanced degrees, sixty-five point one eight compared to the other two categories. And so we're well above average in the advanced degrees as well. So our staff is highly educated, highly experienced and highly licensed. So that's a very good thing for our district. All right, we'll go ahead and advance. So now I'm going to talk about the world's best workforce summary goals. And there are five different goals that the state of Minnesota asks us to assess each year. And they're, all children are ready for school. So it's really kind of a preschool, pre-K kind of a program. And then all third graders can read at grade level. And then all racial and economic achievement gaps between students can be closed. Now, and all students are ready for career in college. And then all students graduate from high school. Those are the five categories that we always choose goals from. Go ahead. So goal number one is all children are ready for school. And we had two sub-goals underneath that. So the first one was that we would increase our student participation in school-based programming up to two hundred and ninety-five students. Unfortunately, we lost students rather than gained students. And so we were down to two fifty-eight. So we did not meet that goal. I think that's to expect, be expected. We had a large number of parents either opt out of preschool programs altogether or choose to homeschool their students last year. And the second goal was that our four-year-old students would be ready for kindergarten according to all of their different assessments. And then again, instead of raising from eighty-five to eighty-seven, it decreased. And so that goal was not met either. Next slide. Our second goal is all third graders can read at grade level. The first goal was that our third graders on the reading proficiency test for the MCA or the M tests would increase from sixty point one to sixty-two point one. Instead, it decreased to fifty-eight point three percent. And so we had a drop there. And then goal number two, looking at our special educations group in particular in grade three, we were hoping to see an increase from forty point five to forty-two point five. Instead, again, we saw a decrease in thirty-one point, down to thirty-one point seven percent. And those are all areas that we need to work on. But read well by third grade is a major, major push in Minnesota. And so we're really focusing right now on our K through three programs and really working hard to make sure students can read, read well by third grade. Because the data does show that if they're not reading at grade level by third grade, it's very difficult for them to catch up as they move forward. Our third goal, I think I'm on number three, all racial and economic achievement gaps between student populations are closed. This is another goal that was not met. So we were looking at closing the achievement gap. This has actually three different goals to it. This is just the first one. This was the gap between white students and students of color. And so we were hoping to decrease that gap between achievement. Right now, there's a thirteen point three percent gap. We wanted to decrease it down to eleven point seven. Instead, it went up to a thirteen point seven percent gap. So we still have that gap existing and our goal is to decrease that. Eventually down to zero would be great. Go ahead and. The second gap we looked at is students receiving free and reduced lunch compared to those who do not receive free and reduced lunch. Looking to close that gap. And so we wanted to decrease our twenty-three point six percent gap in achievement between those groups down to twenty-one point six, which we were able to do. So our gap was at twenty point nine. So that goal we did meet. So that was a good result in our tests. And then this one is between our, our EL students and our non-EL students. And we wanted to close, and our achievement gap is really wide there and that's to be expected, I think. But we wanted to close it from fifty-six point eight down to fifty-four point eight and actually dropped it all the way down to forty-six point four percent gap. We did provide a lot of intervention services for EL last year and we're working hard to provide more this year. So that was another goal that was met. This is goal number four. So all students are ready for career in college. And one of the, we had, we had two goals for this one. The first one was to close the enrollment gap in our rigorous courses. So we want to give all students a chance to be able to participate in those rigorous courses. And up until now, up until this year, we've had really low rates of participation in those courses with students who are receiving free and reduced lunches. And so we looked at that and our goal was met all the way across the board. We were able to decrease our gaps with PSEO, college and the schools courses and advanced placement courses. So really on the right track. And then our last one is all students will graduate from high school. And again, there, there are three goals here. The first one is that all students in Monticello Public Schools, we'll increase our graduation rate from ninety-four point five to ninety-five percent. Unfortunately, it dropped down below ninety percent the first time in, I don't know, since I've been here. It's dropped below ninety percent. So at eighty-seven point seven percent. However, if I just only looked at Monticello High School itself and the students in that school, they were at ninety-three point nine. But when we add in alternative school and we had a pretty high population last year, those students really struggled to graduate. So that does bring our rates down. The second goal was Hispanic and Latino students. We wanted to increase from eighty-eight to ninety percent. Fortunately, that went down to sixty-two point five percent. Our Hispanic population did struggle quite a bit last year due to language barriers and COVID. And then our last group was students who qualify for free and reduced lunches. We wanted that to be up to ninety percent as well and that went down to seventy-two percent. So we have to be working on our graduation rates. We know that. We have some credit recovery planning in place to get those students up to speed this year and be able to graduate by the end of the year, both last year's students and this year's seniors. Next slide. I'll pause there to see if anybody has any questions first on those five goals that I talked about.
The only thing I would like to mention, Cindy, or make a connection with in one of their first slides, when, when you were talking about college bound students and looking at that seventy-two percent that you record and knowing that that's only one percentage point away from the state average. Another thing that the district is, is actually very proud of is that we are, you know, looking at connecting students to internships, apprenticeships, to, you know, post-secondary in some fashion, but also trying to get people connected to the workforce through various, you know, strong apprenticeship programs. So, you know, getting kids in the right place is just as important as the college piece. And so then your second slide, when you show that, you know, that eighty-three percent have earned a, you know, a college credit after two, one college credit after two years. That's really important to note that, you know, that, that shows that we're getting the right kids into those doors. And then, and then I think what we can do as a district is continue to look at the other twenty-nine percent. What are they doing? Where are they? How, and how can we gauge their success? So I think, look at that further as you, as you mentioned it. I think it's, it can be a celebration too. So I think we need to dig deeper. And then the other thing is just, you know, I'd like to see not only those stats that we just talked about, that I just talked about, but also just knowing, seeing that as a school district, you know, we have goals for all students. And that is our job is to champion education for all of our kids. So good to see across reference embedded deep.
Yeah. And as you mentioned that, you know, some of the things that the high school is really working hard on is developing career pathways and articulating courses for kids to get more college credits. And so they're really working hard on helping students start in eighth grade already, looking at what would their interests be and what is their path? So that they can start to take courses that they're very interested in that could lead them into a post-secondary career of some sorts, you know, options. It can be a tech college, it can be a four-year college, a two-year college, it doesn't matter, a skilled trade. But we're helping them discover that a lot sooner now. That's the plan. So I think we'll see those numbers go up. So I just want to go quickly through this and I know I've shown this before. But if you look on the right side, the statewide goals are by twenty twenty-five, they, and actually by twenty twenty, last year, consistent attendance is supposed to, attendance is supposed to be at ninety-five percent. Of course, everybody knows with COVID, that wasn't going to happen, but, and four-year graduate rate at ninety percent. So we were at the grad rate before COVID hit. But all of the rest of them by twenty twenty-five, the goal is that we have ninety percent of our students achieving third grade reading levels and eighth grade math levels. And then we have eighty-five percent of our EL students progressing. So that's the state goal. So I want to show you where we're at compared to those. Go ahead and flip. So the goal is ninety percent for graduation. And we, like I said, we're at eighty-seven point seven, so we're a little ways off. Consistent attendance, we're at eighty-eight point eight. We need to be at ninety-five. Go ahead. Looks like my slides got all messed up. Fifty-four point five percent for math achievement. It's supposed to be at ninety percent, not eighty-five. Reading achievement, we're at fifty-seven point nine. Want to be at ninety percent by twenty twenty-five. So again, scores have dropped this year. Go ahead. Fifty-eight percent for reading grade three and forty-five point six percent for math grade eight. So our MCA score has dropped significantly last year. And then the goal is eighty-five percent for our EL language proficiency and we're at sixty-three point three one. All right. So this last part is the achievement and integration summary. And again, I'm new at this come, as of this fall. I was not in charge of this program last year. I did not write the goals. So I'm just really here to let you know how we did as best we can. M D has told us that they understand that districts won't necessarily have achievement in their goal areas. And they're saying it's all right that we report that we aren't, that we're still in progress for next year. So don't be, you know, alarmed if you see a lot of not applicable holes. So the purpose of the A and I grant is to, whoop, I'll flip back one, thank you. Is to make sure that we pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement and create equitable education opportunities, reduce academic disparities between student groups. And go ahead and flip now, Gavin. Thank you. So the first goal, we have four goals for A and I program. The first goal is that students eligible for free and reduced price lunches will increase their math proficiency by three percent each year. And some of the interventions that we're going to be using is, or some of our strategies were math intervention classes at the middle school, high school level. And then working hard to decrease those enrollment gaps, similar to what I talked about with the world's best workforce. By the way, the reason we're using free and reduced price lunch, you'll see that all the way through the A and I plan is they were advised to use the free and reduced category because that is our largest special population of students that we have at Monticello. And it would tend to encompass some of the other populations of students of color or students with disabilities would probably likely fall, fall within some of those categories as well. So those were the three strategies that we were going to use. And then go ahead and flip. So under strategy number one, we wanted ninety percent of our students in math intervention to increase math confidence. After having received those interventions, we only achieved about an eighty-two percent, which I don't think is a bad number at all. But it was not ninety percent as we had hoped. Also ninety-five percent of the students in math intervention in middle school would achieve passing scores on their summative evaluations, which they did. So that was excellent. Whoop, flip back, sorry. Got the bottom one. The bottom one pertains to high school. And so there was no survey given to the high school students regarding math confidence. I did one this fall, so I will have baseline data for that. But there wasn't one given last year, so there was nothing to measure there. And then achieving passing scores, they were at an eighty-three point three percent. Not bad at all either, but not ninety-five percent. And I just feel like ninety, ninety-five percent is pretty high for a group of students who are struggling learners. I think maybe that was a goal that was set too high personally. All right. Thank you. Strategy three was ninety-five percent of the students who use extra, extra supports will gain, will gain more than, let's see, will show gains in essential math concepts. And so, no, it was eighty-eight point nine. And what we did there is students who got extra supports, I looked at how, what their grades were last year. Now I looked at what their grades are this year and compared. And the ones who grew, there were eighty-eight point nine percent of them who have grown in their math skills because they're doing so much better this year. And then we wanted to increase that enrollment to fifteen percent. That's by twenty twenty-three, by the way. And we did that. So our enrollment is up to fourteen point eight percent, students of color in our rigorous course, math courses. So that would be AP calculus we're talking about. And then the last one, yes, we saw growth in our equal and fair access to programming. All right, next goal. Goal two was to increase reading proficiency instead of math proficiency. And in order to do that, we were providing more reading interventions in the elementary levels and middle school. And then we had instructional coaching with a literacy focus. Go ahead. Some of our key indicators in progress. The first one, we were not able to measure. There was no elementary intervention actually last year. So the focus really fell on the middle school and high school last year. So we'll be working on that this year. We have data for three through five moving forward, but none last year. And then as far as reading interventions at the middle school level, they didn't quite make that ninety-five percent again. Again, I feel like ninety-five percent is pretty high for struggling students. Be great, but it's high. And then on the bottom, number of coaching conversations. That's an instructional coach who's going into work with the teachers on how to use intervention strategies, especially reading strategies. And the goal was met there at fifteen different meetings. Thank you. Goal three, that one is to increase enrichment opportunities for students. Some of these things were not able to be done, like the first one, the St. Cloud Collaborative. That's the group that, that we are partnering with and that we've got our A and I grant through St. Cloud. So St. Cloud is, Kara, I might need your help on this. St. Cloud is a racially isolated district. Yeah, thank you. And because we are bordering them, all of the bordering districts also qualify for A and I funding. And the purpose is that we will integrate then with that district and provide opportunities for our students and our teachers to collaborate between. And so that will help our students to have more access to more students of color and be able to work one-on-one with them and teachers as well. And so that's what that first one is. And then the second one is Kara, she's our family liaison. And then we worked on cultural competency and then enrichment. So those are four areas for goal three. So the key indicators of progress, again, we couldn't really do any of the first four things that you see. And that is again, because of COVID, either we couldn't have meetings, we couldn't meet with the collaborative. They didn't do, they didn't allow any of the schools to intermingle at all last year. So that will all be stuff that we'll be working on this year. The one thing that we were able to do is to increase the percentage of parent and guardian contact. of parent and guardian contacted that needed support in order to bridge school and family needs. I think there was a very high emphasis on that last year through emails, parent phone calls, student tracking to see how well they were doing, a lot of student interventions. I saw lunchroom, lunch meetings that I know Kara would have and other teachers would have, where they'd have groups of students in the room and they were helping them. So interventions and communications with those students in need were very high last year. Good job of that. All right, next one. This is access to enrichment opportunities. We increased our access to enrichment opportunities for K through five students by giving all students grades two and four, the COGAT test, which is a test for our Gifted and Talented Program. So in the past, students were referred, and then they were given the test to see if they qualified, where last year we decided, no, everyone gets tested, and then depending upon the test, then we'll look at other measurements so that there weren't students who maybe could have qualified but kind of slipped through the cracks. So we wanted to make sure it was equal and fair at all, so every student was tested. And we were able to pull a lot of students out of there that would not have been recommended otherwise. And then our last goal is to increase access to classrooms taught by culturally competent pedagogy. And so one of the main things that we did last year for that is we sent about twenty-plus teachers to CLR training. So that's called culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning. And those teachers are now implementing those strategies into their classrooms to help their classrooms become inclusive of all students and their cultures. So a few of the strategies that we used, if you want to flip. Few of the strategies that we used to measure, so eighty percent of our students would have equal access. We said, yes, a hundred percent of our students have equal access to those teachers who have been trained. So up till this point, between the year before and then last year, I think we might, we probably have thirty-five teachers who are trained. And then I did some surveying of teachers to ask how they're doing with implementing strategies. We weren't at ninety percent, but eighty-six point seven percent reporting that they're using those strategies, and it was a thirty-three percent growth, so that was very good. And then at the bottom, Dr. Holly was our speaker last year with culturally competent strategies for us. And all, all teachers participated in all of those training sessions, so that was also another intervention that we used right here. So I think that, want to flip one more, I think that's it, yeah. That's the achievement and integration plan. We do have a team of administrators, a small group of administrators and leaders in the district who are going to be working together to develop a three-year plan for achievement and integration and world's best workforce. And we'll be bringing, be bringing that forward to you. But expect to see some changes in some of the goals that we'll be using going forward.
Cindy, could I just, you had said in regards to the COGAT, if we're given it, and then without that, if it wasn't given to all, some would have been missed. So like some of the reasons that they would have been missed, why wouldn't have kids?
I think sometimes if a student is an underachiever in the classroom, you're not, not, maybe they're bored, maybe they're not interested, the teacher doesn't view them as a high-achieving student, they might not have been recommended to be tested even. Whereas when they go and they take the test, all of a sudden, all of these skills come forward that you didn't even realize the student had because they just didn't, weren't a standout in your classroom. So I think sometimes as teachers, we, we notice all of those kids who raise their hand a lot or they're, you know, they study a lot and they are high achievers, but a lot of our GT students actually are underachievers. So you just don't see that. And those recommendations were coming straight from classroom teachers. So this way, we were able to catch.
So was it recommended before that we didn't do all? I guess why was it that we were only doing?
It's expensive. Yeah, it's expensive. So we're using A&amp;I money now to fund testing all second and fourth grade students. And so now with that additional funding set aside for that testing piece, now we're able to do it where we didn't have that funding before, yeah.
It's great that we're capturing those.
Yeah, I think so.
I also didn't want to pass over, in the very beginning, we kind of went through it really quickly, and actually not the very beginning because this was a lot of information, but it was back with some of the other standards. And we didn't meet the goals, but they were for math, so I certainly don't want to pass over the efforts of all those students, parents, and teachers that made impressive improvements, even though we didn't meet some of those.
I agree.
High goals.
Yes, I agree. I think some of those I would have set at sixty percent, especially as, as a beginning, as a starting place. And yeah, a lot, a lot of hard work went into a lot of that.
Especially with somewhat trying to recover from what we, the kids and families have already been through. And then to still achieve those highest numbers, I think it's very impressive.
So, you know, I will have to say that in twenty, twenty nineteen, I think the goals were probably written because it's a three-year plan, so twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So who knew what was coming? So I think a lot of those goals were set without any of that in mind. Now that's why we're saying, well, we got to go back and reassess this, need to do over.
Thank you, Cindy.
Anything else?
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, thanks.
I could have just, one, one more thing, sorry. I just want the board you to know that sometimes you hear buzzwords or things. So I heard one buzzword that I also want us to make reference back to my teaching career. So culturally and linguistic, linguistic responsive teaching. The nineties, it was respond, it was learning styles. So we were trained at our school about understanding, if you're going to say every kid every day, you need to understand about kids and how they learn. Back in the late nineties and early two thousands, it was PSYOP. So like things, you know, it's, so this has been around for a long time. It's just, the more we know about kids and how they learn, the more we want to learn that as teachers and educators. We are on continuous pursuit of making sure that we understand about kids. It's nothing new.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Cindy.
Now we can move on to our Safe Routes to School resolution.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. So just a quick update for the resolution that you have in front of you, and really an update for Safe Routes to School. If you remember back about three and a half years ago, the school board approved a Safe Routes to School plan that we put forth, and, and that was a grant that we submitted and approved for, worked with the city and county and school district officials, and then brought in a team from Safe Routes that put the plan together. The school board approved it. And so far, we have, we've applied and been approved for multiple infrastructure grants already. So really wanted to let you know that, you know, it's not front and center all the time. And we continue to move forward with the city. The first project that we got done was very shortly after Safe Routes Plan was put together, the rapid flashing beacons at the middle school, the median work at the middle school just over here on Broadway was installed shortly after. We submitted another infrastructure grant that was approved, and that work will begin, I believe, next summer, where the city is starting to work with some construction companies to get bids now. And that work will be done along School Boulevard. So Eastview has some sidewalk extensions. There's some work that'll be done around the exit lane of the, of the student parking lot at the high school, and then also some rapid flashing beacons where the little mountain students cross. So that's a big part of our Safe Routes Plan right there that we're excited about. And then this resolution, it's, the city is putting forth another infrastructure grant. And it always helps when we put those grants forward if the Safe Routes Committee knows that the school board is behind that, that plan. And so it's just another, it's another piece of the puzzle for our infrastructure that we're trying to improve, Safe Routes to School for walking, biking, and all of the above. This particular resolution and infrastructure grant that we're trying to apply for is, is over on the Pinewood side. So there are some, and Clay has those graphics if you need to look at them, right, Clay? Yeah. We have them if you need them, but it's the, it's all part of the Safe Routes Plan. It's just another extension of that and focusing on the Pinewood side. So if you, if you need more information about that, I'd be happy to grab those graphics, but that's what this is. And it's important to mention that the city is applying for this grant, so in no way is the, are they asking for funds from the school. But it does help, again, if we can add this resolution to the grant to say this is a partnership with both the city and the school board. And I'd be happy to take any questions before we move forward.
If you want to, you know, if you have any questions on any of the things that have been done or in the future, it's just good to know that this has been going. Gabe, how long have you been working on this? Like you said, three years, is it?
Yeah, I think three and a half years since we had it approved, and then you'd have to back up another year and a half for when we just applied for the original plan and brought the team in place.
Thank you for all your work you've done on that. And those flashers are really noticeable as we drive by, and it'll be nice to see similar things at the other schools, too.
Yeah, it makes a difference. And, you know, the team, all the administrators within, within our district have been phenomenal about jumping in and helping. But I really think what sets us apart is our partnership with the city. They work really hard for us. And, and, you know, the, the Safe Routes Plan makes safe routes all throughout the city for any community member, but they really are zeroing in on our kids and how they get to school and how they navigate the trails within Monticello. I think it's important to mention that, too.
You have the resolution?
I do. Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board, District 882, to support the city Monticello's application for an infrastructure grant for Elm Street safety improvements. Second.
Resolution read by Candy, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution passes four zero. Thank you, Gabe.
Thanks, everybody.
Now we can move on to our COVID-19 update.
All right, so just an update, and there, I'm going to go to the next slide, Evan. Just a few things since we've met last, but we try bringing COVID-19 update at every school board meeting. If you read your, your weekly news, it's covered in there. So right now, most of this information has been, the, the most of this information today should all be reviewed for you, I should say. So we continue to, you know, implore parents to keep students home when they're sick, achieving expectations for staff. Because of this and because of illness and normal absences, staffing across the district continues to be difficult. Are meeting those challenges and proud of that. Wright County Public Health Holding Second Vaccination Clinic for five to eleven-year-olds at the Monticello Middle School this Thursday. Very limited appointments available at Wright County Public Health website. Do, I do need to give the middle school staff a shout-out. The Wright County Vaccination Clinic said that this was the school that had the most organization to it before they stepped in the doors. They were very pleased that we helped get them tables, chairs, and actually had it followed exactly by the map. So the, the crew at the middle school is amazing. Waiting federal guidelines for vaccination requirements coming. Per policy eight oh seven, we will comply with OSHA guidelines, and that is guidelines regarding staff vaccination. And then since our last board meeting, we have communicated the mitigation matrix to accompany our safe plan. So that has also went out to families so that they understand that, you know, along with high positive case rate or higher positive case rate in the last about a month, we need to prepare for, you know, a response. And I was asked the number, you know, that three to five percent, and what, what do those numbers mean? So I have had a few people ask me that. And five percent is a number that I've seen lots of different school districts use, or as a principle, it was the number that we had Minnesota Department of Health use with us when they would get involved in like influenza cases. And so five percent is a number that has been used with infectious disease from VIH in the past. So it seems like it's a, a number that we should be watching and making sure that we stay below that as we always have. It's kind of a historical number that we want to make sure that we navigate and make sure that we keep doing things to stay under that. Go ahead, next slide. Just a reminder to use the, the district COVID numbers. We have more of a composite data on the left, and then we look at a line graph. And then also now, as a third subset of information, we do record information by building as well so that we know if we need to do any targeted mitigation at any building, and we will do that immediately. So, last thing is just, if anybody has any questions, thoughts, discussion.
Eric, for that update. And now we can go to the second reading of policies.
Tonight, we're bringing forth just one policy for second reading. It's eight oh eight, Animals on School Premise. The policy committee has an opportunity to work through these policies with MSB and MDE recommendations, Inges. They previously had first reading, and all board members have had the opportunity to review the policies. Are there any questions at this time regarding this particular policy?
I get a motion to approve?
It's almost.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Eric. And now we've reached the end of the agenda, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
It's almost second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed four zero. We are adjourned at seven twenty-one, everyone.